Welcome to the April 12th, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Jonathan Painter, who's a third-year Bible student at Texas Baptist College in Longview. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Father, Lord, I thank you for our country. I thank you, dear Lord, for America. I thank you, dear Lord, for those who lead our country. I thank you, dear Lord, for those who lead our state. I thank you, dear Lord, for those here that lead our city. I pray, Lord, you be with them, give them wisdom. I pray, dear Lord, that in this meeting, that everything that's done will be done to your honor, to your glory, dear Lord. We beg and we ask you for this now, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Jonathan, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Okay. First item tonight is our citizen comment. Do not have any citizen comment cards. Is anybody here that would like to speak that hadn't had a chance to fill out a speaker card? If not, we'll move away from citizen comment, and there's a couple of presentation items. Come on. Come on up here. We've met you before. How you doing? Good. Well, we'll get you to fill out a card. Not now, not now, not now. Just before you leave, before you go home.
Okay. I'm still new at this now.
That's okay.
Okay. My question that I want to ask tonight is that we was at the Heritage Park, you know, probably, I think, about two weeks ago, and it was kind of dark out there. Is there a light above the park out there? Because it was kind of dark.
At Heritage Plaza?
Yeah, Plaza. Yes, you know, and it was kind of dark out there, you know, so I just want to suggest that, you know, if we did get a light out there, would it be like bugs up there or... Because it was pretty dark.
Go ahead, Bicasia.
I was looking at Laura. Aren't there some lights around? There are lights around the park.
More like accent lights around.
Yeah, they are. I don't know if that's even something we could reasonably do. Laura will look into it, but it was dark. It was.
Yes, you know, so I was kind of concerned about that was one of the questions I wanted to ask.
No problem.
Okay. That's all I wanted.
Come back and see us again.
Thank you. Good to see you tonight.
Tell us again your name.
I'm Sherri Blackman.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackman. Okay. Don't have any other speaker cards. Presentation items. A, Presentation of Proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I've got that for, I think it's, let's see, is it Brooke? Yeah, Brooke Wyatt or Tamika Garden?
Carol Ibarra.
Well, you come right on up here.
Carol Ibarra.
Okay. So this is a proclamation commemorating Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 12th, 2012. Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and its public health implications for every community member of Longview. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. We must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault in holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. The Women's Center of East Texas encourages every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. So therefore, I jade Dean by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, Texas, to hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Longview. Thank you very much for all y'all do. We appreciate y'all. Thanks. And we have another item, and it's for the Longview Community Ministries Week, and I think that's Donna Sharp. You bring them all up here. We've got a big old dials up here. Any more?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, good. How y'all doing?
All right.
All right. Okay, so this is a proclamation commemorating Longview Community Ministries Week, April 16th through the 20th, 2012. Longview Community Ministries continues to fulfill its mission seeking new ways to collaborate and cooperate with churches, individuals, and civic groups to provide relief from human suffering. Longview Community Ministries maintains services of the LCM Service Center, Food Box Pantry, Meals on Wheels, Coat for Kids, and other programs. Longview Community Ministries' mission statement is to enable Longview congregations and groups to work together more effectively in the community through cooperative acts of service to assist persons in need. So therefore, I jade Dean by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview to hereby proclaim April 16th through the 20th, 2012, as Longview Community Ministries Week. Thank y'all very much for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, if you'd like.
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor Dean, and on behalf of the board and Longview Community Ministries and its staff, I would like to invite the council, the mayor, and the community. We are kicking off Longview Community Ministries Week with an open house on Monday, April 16th, from 11:00 to 1:00, at our much larger facilities that were donated to Longview Community Ministries last year at 506 North Second Street. Again, that is Monday, the 16th, from 11:00 to 1:00. We'd love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it again. Thank y'all for being here. Are there any items on the consent agenda council would like to pull for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion? Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Zoning items. Item A, a public hearing to be held to consider application number S-1201. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit in the Longview Town Crossing for a drive-through window at the proposed McDonald's location. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mrs. Shirley. Ms. Allen.
The entryway, is this an entryway off of... Or where is the entryway?
Actually... The mouse is not working. Okay. It's actually going to have the cross access across the front.
Will it be off of East Monroe?
It will not directly. The access points that are already out there that go into the town crossing, it would just connect into that along the backside, like where the restaurants that are currently there, how they have shared access across the front and along the rear. It'll just be a continuation of that.
Okay, that was my question, because I didn't know whether they could get a new cut on East Monroe.
No, sir. This is... This mouse is giving me problems. I apologize. There's a drive that is directly south of them, and then there's one to the north of them, the lot north of them.
Okay. Any other questions? This item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards for this item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item? Not the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item B, a public hearing to consider application PD-1204. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. This is a planned development for an area there along Airline and East Loop 281. This is a rezone for planned development with future site plan approval, so this is just a step in the process to allow them to market the property and try to get a development in there, and then at which point they get that, then they'll come back forward with site plan approval for the final PD. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? This item does require a public hearing. I have a speaker card, but it's from John King, just to answer any questions. So are there any questions for Mr. King? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter? Not the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion? Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item C, public hearing to consider application PD-1205.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. This is an amendment to an existing PD-07-02. Basically allows for some minor changes and setbacks, the lot configuration and the streets to accommodate additional fire department access. This is a PD that was previously approved under a master plan. As I said, they're just minor amendments. Once they've gone into the future phases, with the topography, they've seen changes that need to be made.
Yeah.
Planning, zoning commission and staff do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Where is that access? The fire department, that one there?
Secondary access.
On the circle there? Okay.
Yeah. Right along here. And this is an area, the trail, the walking trail is along here, and it'll just be a fire department access only. It won't be for vehicular traffic.
Questions, council? This item does require a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do have a speaker card from Joe Hart, who's here available for questions. Any questions, council, for Mr. Hart? Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to this matter? Not the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
To approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Shirley.
Thank you.
Okay, council, action item A, Consider Resolution for the Creation of a Non-Member, Non-Stock Cultural Education Facility Finance Corporation. Mr. Ewings.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item is for a request the city of Longview's received for the... From LV Medical Properties III LLC for the creation of a Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation to assist in the development of a 74-unit assisted living facility. State law permits financing of these types of health facilities under this type of corporation. If the council creates this corporation, they would be able to issue taxable bonds that the developer would be responsible for repayment of. No liability would be... The city would have no liability for repayment of these bonds. The location is at on Lago Trail, generally located at the southwest corner of Bill Owens and HG Mosley. The city's Certified Retirement City Committee did review this proposal last week, and they do recommend approval for this use of this corporation. Chris Brogdon and Mike Clowers are the developers of this project. They are here for questions, if council has any questions.
Council questions? Yes. Ms. Allen.
It's just a matter of clarification, but understand from earlier talking to Mr. Brogdon, we were a little confused as far as the purpose of the corporation with us approving it, but I think according, and we can clarify this, that they would be tax-exempt bonds is the reason they need this resolution passed, tax-exempt.
My understanding, they are taxable bonds, since it is a private development.
There are a few taxable, but they're primarily 85% would be tax-exempt.
Okay.
Okay. Just a matter of clarification.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, action item B, Consider Resolution Transfer in a Certificate of Convenience and Necessity. Mr. Ewings?
Thank you, Mayor.
You can take care of this as well.
Yes, sir. The Kenneth Crawford, he's owner of Yellow Checker Cab in Shreveport, Louisiana, has purchased, I believe, London Cab Company. That requires a transfer of the CCN that the city issues to cab companies. He's... Mr. Crawford's completed all the required paperwork, and staff is recommending transfer of the CCN. He is not intending to change the number of vehicles at this point, or the business as it operates now, and would have to come back in the future if he did, but... So therefore, he's only required a transfer, and we're recommending approval of the transfer.
Questions, council?
Will the name change?
I don't believe he's intending to change the name now.
The court of the contract, we've changed the name in 180 days.
In 180 days, the name will change, but currently it'll operate under as it is.
Institution gone.
Is.
Any other questions? Not may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Publishing and Posting of the Substantial Amendment to FY-1112 Consolidated Action Plan Document. Ms. Angie Johnson.
Good evening. We are here requesting to publish and post a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 11 consolidated action plan and the CDBG budget. And basically, what that amendment is, is we're changing the scope and location of the public facility activity. The original budget was to replace sewer and water lines at High Street and Marshall Avenue, and we want to change it, we need to change it, to just replacement of the water lines at Common Street and Avenue C. The amount of funding stays the same. It's just we had to change locations.
Okay. Questions of Ms. Johnson? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item D, Consider Resolution to Publish and Post the Draft FY-12 Annual Housing Plan and Consolidated Action Plan Documents. Ms. Johnson.
And yes, that's our to publish and post the proposed fiscal year 12 annual consolidated plan and the housing plan and budgets and all of our policies. We have to do a 45-day mandatory comment period, so we're asking to post and publish those documents.
Questions? Comments? Not may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And item E... Oh, excuse me. That's it? Angie?
Yes, sir.
You leaving us already?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Item E is to consider the acceptance or rejection proposals for collection and processing of recyclables. And on advice of council, I shall remove myself from the room for potential conflict of interest. Is that correct, Mr. Finley? Okay. And we're going to turn the meeting over to our senior member, Mr. Darrell Williams. Darrell?
Okay, and it says...
Do you need the hammer over there?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. That'll be Mr. Dwayne Archer, our sanitation and fleet manager.
Thank you, council. Mr. Willard, let me run through the work session on January 31st. We discussed recycling, and we're instructed by council to go ahead and go out for RFPs or request for proposals, just to get an idea of what would be available to the city of Longview. On March 18th, we brought that RFP before council for discussion, and then shortly after, we published that RFP. Today, I'd like to bring the two proposals that we received. Okay. We received two proposals, one from Allied Waste Services and one from IESI. Both the proposals offered adequate collection systems. Both proposals' collection rate would include all households, whether they recycled or not, and both proposals would provide 95-gallon collection carts. Now, allow me to go through the rates. That's a little bit of a busy chart, but allow me to run through that, see if my pointer will work. Allied Waste proposed $2.90 per household per month. IESI, $3.85 per household per month. So the gross annual collection cost would be $852,600 for the Allied proposal and $1,131,900 for the IESI proposal. In that proposal, we also asked them to give us a rate of compensation per ton of recycled materials. Allied Waste came back with a compensation of $20 per ton. IESI did not include a compensation with their proposal. If we took the FY-11 collection quantities, the weight that we had, that would give us a number somewhere around $34,680. With this proposal, this is asking those companies to actually make the collection at the curb, so sanitation department would have some reduction in their expenses. That reduction would be 84 cents towards the rate per household per month, or a total annual expenditure savings of $247,300. So if we take a look at the annual collection cost, subtract out what we would receive for recyclables, subtract out our annual expenditure cost, that would leave us an actual net cost of $570,620 for Allied's or $84,600 for the IESI proposal. If we convert that to rates, that would give us a rate increase per household of $1.94 for the Allied proposal and 301, excuse me, for the IESI proposal. Now let me run through sanitation. Our intention is to continue to offer a collection for the 18-gallon bin at zero cost. All we would like to do is make the 95-gallon cart available to our customers, and if you've seen the recycling bins, they end up all over, and not necessarily for recycling. So what we'd like to do is offer that cart for $1 rental fee per month, just to keep it where we have good control over that and kind of reduce the chances of that thing being used for other than recyclables. But even with that, if every customer in Longview decided that they would like to have one of the carts, that would give us a total of $294,000 annually to the sanitation department. So compensation, as you know, what we would have to do if the city was to receive this, what we would have to do then is negotiate a compensation per ton with the processing facilities. So that really brings us through that, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Go back to the first screen you had. Yeah, that one.
Yes.
Now, I just wanted to... For clarification, you say that both of those proposals, the 290 and the 385, that's for every household, whether you want to recycle or not?
Yes, sir.
And the city proposal is for a dollar if you want to subscribe, correct?
To the larger cart.
To the larger cart.
Yeah, we'll continue.
Or you'll continue to pick up the little blue one for the no extra cost.
Yes, sir. The only thing we'd like to do is, right now, the city of Longview drives every street looking for recycling bins and carts. The only thing we'd like to do is establish some kind of database where those people that wish to recycle would let us know.
No.
And that way, we could route to those homes that we actually need to go to.
That makes sense.
So that would be just a cost savings for us.
Any more questions for Mr. Archer?
The dollar for the subscription?
Yes, sir.
That would... How long are these bins? Life of one of these bins?
They have a 10-year warranty on them.
10-year warranty?
Yes, sir.
Oh, they got 10-year warranty?
10-year warranty, yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Does that cover theft?
No. The only thing that we would ask in that case is that if a customer's cart was to be stolen, that they would file a police report. Now, they're all serial numbered, so we will end up finding that cart if it's in Longview somewhere.
How much do they cost?
About $50 apiece.
$50?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. So that dollar would help us... Some of them are going to get destroyed or whatever.
Yes, sir.
So the dollar a month will help us... Depreciation, so to speak.
Right.
Help us replace them.
Yep.
I have one more question for you, Mr. Archer.
Yes, sir.
You say the compensation per ton of recyclables on the city's proposal here... Go back to the city's... You would have to negotiate that.
Right. This is similar to what the original RFP that we brought for the processing.
Right.
We would basically have to handle that processing again and take a look what's available to us.
My question is, if we negotiated a fee there, would it come off of that dollar that we charging our customers extra? Would it reduce that, or could it reduce that?
It would be added back to the sanitation fund and reduce our cost, and therefore, whenever we needed to make increases or adjustments, we wouldn't need to do that.
Okay.
Just quickly.
Okay. Thank you. I... We have an Allied Waste representative here who would like to speak.
Good evening, members of council, staff, residents. I didn't... There wasn't any cards out there, so I'll be happy to fill one out. Get you one. Here when we get finished, when I walked in. So I'll do that here in just a second. I want to, if you don't mind, can I hand a couple of things just to the group of you and also to staff as well? And we could separate them out.
That's right. Start on the side, just to pass it around.
Could you give us your name? Yes. Yes, my name is Reed Donaldson. I'm the North Texas Area Director for Municipal Services. So... And again, I printed 10 copies off, so there should be enough for anybody, any of the staff as well. Sure.
Oh, these are two different things.
Yes, sir.
Oh. Need one more down here. Need one down here.
Okay, and I don't want you guys to have to take a lot of time looking at this, and I'll just tell you a little bit about it. The first one that says Republic Services on top was a letter that we presented 16 months ago to the city, kind of explaining some cost reductions. The second sheet, the one that just has city of Longview cost savings, that's just a form that we did today, just to show you kind of on average what costs the city would save. And as you see down there, this is based off costs that we use in our industry and in our company across all of the nation to generate a performa that in turn tells us what we can charge and what we can bill. Primarily, I only wanted to talk because when Dwayne presented the dollar fee for the additional carts, and you look at the fee here that we came up with today using current fuel costs, current maintenance costs, and current labor costs, that number's $1.93. And then you turn around and put the dollar on it for these carts here, you're at $293. Basically, already at a little bit higher than the 290 that we proposed. So if you really think about the costs in general, they're right in line. So I think it's interesting. I did not know the dollar was going to be presented tonight, and it's just interesting that when you run the costs, they came out very, very close to each other. So basically, it would be about the same. Now, the difference is, you guys are going to only bill the customers that need the carts, and so therefore, the ones that don't want the carts wouldn't pay that fee. But again, those costs that you guys have there in front of you do not include supervisory. They don't include capital costs. They don't include... There's $1.3 million just in carts alone here to purchase all those carts. It's about $700,000 in trucks. So there's about $2 million in capital that's not included in that figure as well. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to propose a bid to you guys, to the city of Longview. We believe that this is the most progressive recycling proposal we've ever made in this area. This includes some very unique trucks that are not being used out here currently at any city east of the metroplex. And again, it offers a rebate that for every ton that you take out of those trash containers that you are using now, and you put them into the recycle cart, that ton becomes a ton that you're paying right now to dispose of, becomes a ton that you get paid for in rebate. So there's about a $40 swing right there, if you take the $20 here, and the fact that you guys pay approximately $20 to dispose of those tons. So this is a very worthwhile program that we believe can be very advantageous for the city of Longview. And I'm here again for any questions as well.
Okay.
Mr. Donaldson, I had one question for you. You had an opportunity, I think, on the RFP to put down on a subscription service. Did you bid that?
Ooh. No, I'll be honest with you. I didn't remember seeing that. We can provide it.
Is there any reason?
No. I'll be honest. And you're talking about for people outside the city limits?
No, for people who want to, instead of charging all of our customers, whether they recycle or not, is there a reason you didn't choose to bid that?
We can do that. What happens in that case is the rate gets rather high, because you can't, in the recycle world, it's not like trash, where you pretty much know 95% of the people are going to participate. In recycle, you don't know. I mean, even when we built these performers for this one, it's very difficult, because you have to figure your drive-by time, and that's by seconds. And so you're really estimating how many people you think are going to put carts out every week, and how many aren't. How many are going to put bins out? How many are going to put just loose out? It's very difficult to build. So if you then try to build it on a voluntary basis, it can fluctuate so drastically that it's really risky.
So our number is not like your number, then?
You, which, the dollar number?
You said earlier that the number was the same.
Right.
You were saying that our number for the city was basically almost the same as your number, but it's basically, it's really not. I was just based on a subscriber service, not every household.
That's true. That's true.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Mr.? Okay, thank you. Counsel, do we have a?
I move we accept the city's proposal.
Second.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Do we have to reject this?
I move to reject the proposal.
We need to reject the other two proposals?
I think that would be the proper motion to reject.
Then would that automatically accept the city's, then?
Yes. So they would use that as comparison basis only, the two proposals would need to be rejected.
So the motion would be to reject?
Motion to reject the proposal.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
There may be some unfinished business of this, as I understand. Is there not a directive that needs to be given to staff regards the pickup collection and whatnot?
I think it already. I think the only thing that would probably need to come back at this point would be if they're going to impose some type of fee for the container, the council would need to approve that. But our scheduling as to how do we pick, how the city picks up and all that, that's, we don't take those to council generally.
I think we'd come back and present to you our, Dwayne's program that he's put forth, and then council would need to approve the fee per container.
Come back later with the dollar subscription?
For processing.
Okay, right.
Okay.
But I was thinking about, you know, when it's, when it's assembled, you know, where are you taking it once you collect it?
We'll come back to that. We'll have to, he already said in his presentation that we'd have to, he'd have to go out for like a RFP for that, too.
Well, let's, hey, let's don't get the city attorney nervous now. I'm, I'm maybe not supposed to be asking questions.
No, I mean, you, if we wanted to do, somebody to buy our recycling, that would be a separate matter that we would come back.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I was talking about.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, items of community interest. I lost my sheet. Unless Mr. Frost has it. Mr. Sims?
Okay, y'all, straighten out now, man.
Well, it's your turn, so you better.
Okay.
Go if ever hold your peace.
All right. You have heard me on several occasions speak of my good friend, Dr. Greg Hatzis, and the, what he has given back to this city through Medicaid for children. Of course, being a good friend of mine, I'm quite proud of him, and I had the pleasure this afternoon of visiting with his mother and daddy from New Jersey. Of course, I had met them before, and I just want to welcome them to Longview. They, especially Ms. Hatzis, she fed me a Greek dish this afternoon, and I am.
Is that on your diet?
No, it wasn't, but I took advantage of.
You know your trainer's watching.
I have, I have one off day.
So that means you can't eat anything tonight?
No. I don't want to eat anything tonight. But anyway.
Dr. Hatzis?
Welcome to Longview.
All right. Mr. Williams?
I have nothing, ma'am.
Ms. Williams?
I just want to, I believe this weekend is the Longview High School prom, and just want to encourage children and parents to be very careful, be very safe, and have a great time in our city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frost?
We just talked about recycling, and I want to encourage everyone that's got one of the little blue bins to use it. If we can start, everybody start using those things, we could start reducing it right now. The city can handle it. So if you got a blue bin, put recyclables in, and it's very simple. Was it twos and?
Plastics that are ones and twos, metal cans and newspapers. What carports?
Newspapers, magazine, ones and twos, plastic, milk jugs and such as that?
Yes.
Stick them in that blue box and put them out on Wednesday, and we'll get, remove more stuff out of that landfill and save $20 a ton next week, next Wednesday, if you put it on there.
You know, I heard a funny story about people that were complaining about not wanting to go to that big cart because of the wheels and got a, and then you ride, ride around town, and you see people got their red flyer wagon, you know, with that blue box sitting in it.
Yeah.
But they don't want to use that cart with those wheels, so. Okay. Mr. Allen, with your Easter egg town.
That cart's too big. It's a lot easier to pull that little red wagon.
Yeah.
The, if they, if they don't have a blue container, who do they contact in the city to, to get, to receive a blue container for recyclables?
Just, just give us a call at the office at 237-1250, and we'll get one delivered.
Okay. I guess they could call City Hall, and they could connect from there.
They'll connect it, yeah. Sure will.
Okay. All right. I've got a few things. Downtown Live at 5:00, we'll have the Daniel Foster Band from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's going to be tomorrow night, right? There will be refreshments, live music, and vendors. This free event is held at Heritage Plaza at the corner Green and Methvin in downtown Longview. Citywide cleanup, tire recycling, and electronics recycling will be held on Saturday, April 14th, from 8:00 a.m. till noon at the Longview Public Library. More information, contact 903-237-1390. The Longview Police Department Women's Handgun Safety is Thursday, April 19th, starting at 6:00 p.m. at the Maude Cobb Activity Center located at 100 Grand Avenue. More information, call 903-808-3388. How many people y'all going to have for that, chief?
Around four.
Really?
Yes.
Now, is that the concealed handgun program, or just general handgun?
Just general handgun.
Okay. Well, that sounds like a good program. Counsel, anybody else have anything?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Williams?
I'm sorry. I forgot about the Amtrak anniversary train that is coming to Longview on April the 27th.
And the farmers market, too.
Please come out. Oh, well, hold on, let me finish. I'll do that one, too. April the 27th, 28th, and 29th, join us at the depot. It's going to be a fabulous event, and on that Friday, we will actually begin with a groundbreaking for the new renovations, and it's going to be very unique, thanks to Ms. Hill and her staff for that part. You got to be there. The historic farmers market.
Thanks, Williams.
Historical farmers market, Victoria, is this Saturday, downtown Longview. Go get your fresh fruits, veggies, and everything that you could ever want to eat. You better get there early, it's all going to be gone. And Mayor, I wanted to excuse Councilman Manley.
Okay.
Who's not with us.
Are you sure you want to do that?
I thought about it first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Couple of things. Dalton Days this weekend, tomorrow at the newly renovated Longview Rodeo Arena. Please come out and support the event, but also check out your new arena. What else did you say we needed to talk about?
That's it.
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay. And then next weekend is Crawfish Town, the Heritage Festival. And also next weekend is the Longview Greckton Rotary Club's rodeo. So y'all, please come out and support it. All of these activities, you know, bring a lot of money back in our community, so please come support us. At that council meeting is adjourned.